All right, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the San Rafael Planning Commission on Tuesday, July 28, 2020. This meeting is now called the order and I'll ask if staff can help take a roll call for the commissioners who are present tonight.
Thank you Chair Mikado. Good evening Commissioners. Commissioner Davidson.
Here.
Commissioner Lockren.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lubomirzki.
Present.
Commissioner Previtali. Welcome. Commissioner Saudi.
Present.
Welcome. Vice Chair Samuzi.
Here.
And Chair Mikado.
Here. Thanks Rafi. I just want to quickly welcome our two new commissioners tonight. Super excited to have both of you here and part of the team. Looking forward to working with you and excited to get your input on these projects. So next we'll move to the order of the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that any of the commissioners need to change? Looks like no. Next we'll move to the meeting procedures. Due to the COVID-19 shelter in place order, we've had to establish a new way of conducting our public meetings and I'd respectfully ask staff to address how the public comment will work this evening.
Thank you again. So tonight we're accepting public comments telephone or over YouTube live chat. The meeting is being streamed to YouTube live chat where members of community can provide public comments on the agenda items in the live chat box. There are some limitations of 200 characters per block, but you can write multiple times. If you'd like to comment through the YouTube live chat, you need to start the comment with public comment in all caps and then you can go ahead and introduce yourself and provide your comment. We will then, I will then read those at the appropriate time during the public hearing. As I said, we also have an option for community members to attend via conference call. The phone number is posted on the YouTube live stream. It was also posted on the agenda, but as a reminder, it is 669 area code 900 9128. And the meeting ID for this meeting is 897 5534 1830 pound. So if you're going to be participating by telephone and wish to provide public comment, you can press star nine when the chair opens a public comment period for the item you'd like to speak on. Once you press star nine, that will raise your hand virtually and please wait until you hear a notification that you've been unmuted. Then you'll be allotted up to three minutes to speak. If you're submitting public comments on YouTube, please submit your comments by writing public comment in all caps and introduce yourself. If you previously submitted comments by email or letter, it has already been forwarded to the planning commission and published on our website. So with that, that concludes the procedures for how to participate via the YouTube live and Zoom meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then I'll do a quick little overview of the meeting procedures. So we'll begin with the staff report. I believe we only have one item tonight. Then we'll hear from the applicant and we will just request the applicant keep the presentation under 10 minutes if possible. Then members of the public will be invited to speak and we'll read any comments that are made on the YouTube live chat and people on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification. And we'll read any comments that are made on the YouTube live chat and people on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification. That they've been unmuted and respectfully keeping those comments to no more than three minutes. Then we will bring this back, Commissioner will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. The applicant or public after each segment. And we'll close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission. And then we'll have our discussion deliberation and then resolution. So next item is urgent communications. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address this to the commission at this time.
So if there's anyone on the conference call that wishes to provide a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda plus star nine. While we wait for that, I see nobody there. We'll also take any public comments, write us not on the agenda on the YouTube live chat. For which I do not see anybody yet, and let's just give it another ten seconds to make sure. We don't have anybody submitting a comment. Not seeing any comments on phone or via YouTube live chat.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And next we will move on to our one item, which is the agenda. Or the minutes from the June twenty third, two thousand and twenty Planning Commission meeting. Let me know if any of the Commissioners that were at that meeting have any comments. On the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Great, I'll bring this back. Rafi, do we need to check in procedurally if we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, so it will be the same process, if you have a on the phone and want to comment, press star nine. And if anybody on the chat would like to comment on the meeting minutes from June twenty third. And not seeing anybody on the phone line at all. And not seeing anybody chatting on the chat box with any comments on the meeting minutes, so.
Okay, great, so we have a motion from Commissioner Lubomirski and a second from Commissioner Davidson. Unless we have a discussion item, which it sounds like no, maybe we can take roll call please.
Hey. Commissioner Davidson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lockren.
Yes.
Commissioner Lubomirski.
Yes.
Commissioner Previtali.
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Samudzi.
Yes.
And Chair Mercado.
Uh, yes, and Rafi, I'll probably just say we should have the new Commissioners abstain for the minutes since they weren't there.
Yeah, I was thinking that, I'll abstain.
So that will be, the motion will has passed on a vote of five oh with two abstentions.
Perfect. All right, thank you. So now we'll go into our public hearing and.
Isn't it four oh with two abstentions? Or do I not have the numbers right?
So you do.
No, we've got seven, never mind, sorry, I was thinking there was only six.
Yeah, we got seven. Thank you for checking.
Should we double check?
Yeah, we have seven.
COVID's got my numbers all confused right now, so. Are you sure it's not nineteen, everything right now is nineteen? All right. So I think we'll move to our public hearing, which is, we have one item tonight, and that is ten Paul Drive. That is a request for a use permit to allow a medical office within an existing two thousand three hundred and seventy eight square foot office space. Property is owned light industrial. And it which allows for conditional use of a medical office. And they're seeking approval by the planning commission tonight. Uh, so I will ask if we can have staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair Mercado, I just wanted to take a second to introduce Renee Nicknick, who is our new assistant planner. And this is her first time before the commission, so I thought I'd introduce you so you knew we didn't get hacked. Zoom hacked, so with that Renee is going to give you your presentation for this evening.
Well, thank you for the introduction, hello to everybody, nice to meet you virtually, hopefully at some point in person. So the project that we have today, as Chair Mercado said, is an application requesting approval for a use permit. For a medical office in a light industrial office district at ten Paul Drive. It is a two thousand three hundred and seventy eight square foot space, previously used as general office and is now currently vacant. The site is developed at the larger building, this is one space in an entire building divided into three spaces, and this office will just occupy one. At this time, there is no proposal to expand the space in any way, but just to utilize the existing space. So it will not constitute any additional FAR. The the transition of the space from general office to a medical office does require one more parking space. From previously nine spaces to ten required spaces. Currently, there are nineteen spaces at the site and one ADA space, so with the grandfathered. Use the twenty spaces that were previously there, the project does meet the parking requirement. Uh additionally, we staff finds that the project meets all the applicable general plan and zoning code findings. And standards and that and recommends approval of the of the draft evolution, resolution and of the project. That's it, very short, very sweet.
Nice, welcome, I like it. Okay, does, do any of the planning Commissioners have questions for staff? Please, Commissioner Davidson.
I just have a question. Why did this need a planning commission approval?
It is in the in the zoning ordinance that it requires planning commission approval.
Or just the zoning?
Mm-hmm, zoning, just for the medical office use.
Okay.
One of the issues is that in light industrial areas, pure office and medical office. The concept was that they should be limited and be screened so that those types of uses don't take over the light industrial area. Um, to preserve the light industrial base, because usually light industrial areas have. More affordable rents and so forth, so they're attractive to other businesses, but they also provide a valuable service in providing. Light industrial needs for the community. So it's just a way to make sure that it gets the highest attention.
Good question, thank you. Any other Commissioners? If not, please.
This is Commissioner Samudzi, to to follow that previous question. Um, is there, I don't want to, maybe quote is not the right word, but I mean, is there some sort of threshold that you would reserve? I'm, would this consist of, would this particular project be considered a light industrial use?
So this would be considered an office use within the district, so it's part of both the general plan and the zoning ordinance allows for some office space. Um, within the light industrial area, and this is already taking over some existing office space, so it's not adding any additional to the area.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Saudi, I have one question. And I saw on the staff report, it included language about minor surgeries and that major surgeries we performed at Marin General. Um, but I had a question about medical or hazardous waste and if that, those accommodations are. You know, with the light industrial use, if there's, if there are any like. Issues around that, and especially since there's no like secret review.
I'll ask Mr. Blain to respond to that.
App, sorry, I think that's probably a good question for the applicant to respond to, to explain what their procedures are, there, there is some licensing and some. Requirements that they would have as part of their business to dispose of properly the medical waste. And so forth, and it's pretty routine to have minor type surgeries in an office kind of outpatient environment.
Good question. Anyone else, before we turn it over to the applicant? Let them do their part. If not, great, let's see if the applicant can please provide their presentation.
Catherine, you gotta take it off of mute. There we go.
Catherine, you're still on.
You're on mute Catherine.
Okay, now I should be unmuted, hello everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great, hi, I'm Catherine Najasi Tagle, and I really appreciate. Uh, your time, the Commissioner's time and the attention that the staff has put in onto this project. And I wanted to really just kind of present myself, I've been in practice for twenty years as an ophthalmologist. I started my practice in Marin County in two thousand and four at four thousand Civic Center Drive. And I'm an ophthalmologist, I, my bulk of my sort of practice is cataract surgery. Where I do all the surgeries at the hospital, at Marin General Hospital. I'm also a glaucoma specialist and I do minor procedures at my office. Um, I see patients by appointment from eight thirty in the morning till five P M, Monday through Fridays. And obviously I do take calls for the hospital and for the community. Um, I, to basically, just to answer your question about the minor procedures and how we would dispose of waste. I would continue to do what I do now, which is we have a service that picks up any, any particular waste. It's really not a lot, it's just maybe, maybe some sharps and, you know, things that are easily transported. And again, the waste is minimal. Also, that, that is not, not a big issue, it's not a, you know, hospital type surgery. Um, in terms of why I, I wanted to use this office space, this, this property has been in my family, it's owned by my family for many, many years. It has been vacant over the years and the space that I occupy right now at four thousand Civic Center Drive. Has been, you know, a medical practice, but the rent has gone up significantly. And the, the landlords have been either Sutter Hospital and then they switched over to Marin General Hospital. And it's been a sort of a less than pleasant atmosphere to deal with, with those, sort of the way they deal, or they've dealt with me at least. Where I always felt an uncertainty whether they would renew my lease or not. And so I think I, about a year ago, I decided that it's time for me to just really have my own office. And be able to have more certainty in terms of whether I can stay in practice the next year or not. And I think my patients really do rely on me and they would appreciate to have a place where I don't feel like I, I'm going to be having to move. You know, next year because I don't know if they're going to renew my lease. Um, the other issue is that ten Paul Drive is an ideal location, it, it, there are, you know, there are no steps. There is no elevator requirement and it's a perfect location, my practice has been in Terre Linda. Again, since two thousand and four, so for my patients it would be, you know, easy to find. And the, sort of the space is perfect, you know, right now I occupy about less than two thousand square feet. And the, the, the proposed project will be just a little bit over two thousand square feet. So the, the size of it is perfect for my practice. Um, are there any other questions I can answer?
Any Commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you for presenting that.
Of, of course.
Looks like we have none. Give everybody a minute before we. Close the applicant's presentation and open it up for the public, looks like that's what we can do, so. Uh, thank you both for presenting and now we will take this item and open it up for any public comment.
So if you're participating by conference call and wish to speak, press star nine now. And there are no attendees on via conference call. And for the YouTube live chat, if anybody has a public comment, now is the time to submit that. Begin your comment by using the words public comment in all caps and then introduce yourself and provide the comment. I am not seeing any comments at this time. So I think there are no public comments on this item.
Great, thank you. All right, we will close then the public comments and bring this back to the commission. And allow, if the Commissioners have any questions or discussions. This is the time to do it.
I, I had a question about your patients and parking is always an issue even in that part of town. Do most of your patients have a ride service or do they drive themselves to your, to your practice, to your office currently?
Um, majority of my patients do drive themselves to the office, but a good number of patients also do use ride services, so. Um, the kind of age range, most of my patients are in the between ages of sixty and eighty. That's sort of where most people require cataract surgery and being a glaucoma specialist, again, that's a. That's a specialty where a majority of patients are elderly. Uh, so it's a combination, you know, I, you know, my, my sort of job is to restore eyesight of patients. So that they can actually continue to drive on their own. So I would say maybe fifty percent of patients still use ride services, whether it's local stop or some other ride service.
And would your, your office hours are, are eight to four or what are, when do you see patients?
I see patients from eight thirty to five P M, Monday through Friday.
Thanks.
Sure. Uh, Mr. McDonald is also on, online, he's our architect and I don't know if he wanted to, Dan wanted to show the. The project, if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, I could share a screen if you guys are interested, I could, I could put it up if, if that's something you desire.
I'd be interested, yes.
Okay. Can you guys see that now? Commissioners?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so let me, let me flip, I have two, two plans to show you Commissioners, one is the existing plan. Doesn't show too much because, you know, it's a vacant area, but this is the space that they're going to be taking. Our building, our property is this property line. Around and over here, so that's our property. And this is the, we're doing a tenant improvement essentially in this area right here to turn into medical offices. There is some ADA work we're gonna have to do outside of the building, it's not a lot, but it's a little that we're gonna have to do, but almost everything is within the building. There's no, there's no change of design on the exterior of the building at this time. It's all within the building, no, no additional square footage is added. I can blow that up if you wish.
Yes, please.
Okay, hold on a second. Can you read that now, is that a good size?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so, you know, it, as the. The building is now, this is the main entry, so we're keeping, this is the main entry, there's a waiting area. To check in, the patients would walk through this door here and to the various exam rooms, and then there's restrooms, and there's a checkout area as well. And file storage, and then for the employees, there's a break room and a storage room and janitor closet, so it's a pretty simple, small tenant improvement project.
Cool, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
What are your?
What are your, what are your plans for signage? Exterior signage?
We don't really have a plan yet for the signage. So we'll, we'd have to get a sign permit, obviously, but we don't really have anything yet.
Any other commissioners? Oops. No, palm off. Good. Any other commissioners have questions? Issues, concerns?
Was there a question, wasn't a question earlier about waste disposal?
Yeah, I think that was the answer though. Yeah, you can elaborate.
You want me to elaborate on that?
I don't find it necessary, but if Commissioner Samudhi wants more verification.
Yeah, sure, why not?
I mean, basically, the waste disposal is minimal. I use McKesson or some other services where we purchase boxes that are to house any sharps, you know, basically the sharps container. And once that sharp container is filled out, we, we call the, you know, the, I don't even know where my staff gets, gets it from. They order it and they come pick it up. So if you need to know the specific company that we use to help us with the disposal of, you know, waste disposal or sharp disposal, I can certainly get back to you on that. But it's again, minimal.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I don't have any questions. I thank the applicant for her honesty and the struggles with rent, especially around these times. And I'm really pleased to hear there's this option. And I'm pleased to hear that the city's open towards allowing users and being open about the changing world we're in. So, great, I, I support the project.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Especially, I think with, with COVID-19 and the pandemic, it's even more important for me to be able to have control over this space and be able to provide patients really the care that they need to get and not have to really sort of be confined to the small spaces that I'm in right now.
Okay, thank you.
I concur with Commissioner Davidson. It seems like a great alternative for you and a good location for it. And I'm glad that there's some more room. So I also support the project.
Thank you.
So this is a chance I can either do roll call for the commissioners or somebody wants to make a motion. I think this is a pretty straightforward item. I have no edits or amendments to make to the resolution. So unless somebody, right now, any of our commissioners would like to say anything in particular or make a motion on this item, I'll put that opportunity on the table.
I make a motion, well, I make a motion, sorry.
No, I'll make a motion to approve the project as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any amendments, edits, suggestions or changes? If not, I will ask Rafi to take roll call.
Okay, the motion is to approve as presented. So Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lockren?
Yes.
Commissioner Lubomirski?
Yes.
Commissioner Previtali?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Samudhi?
Yes.
And Chair Mercado?
Yes.
So motion carries seven oh.
Great.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Thank you, staff.
Thank you so much. Thank you, team and staff as well. And I will ask a staff if there is an appeal on this one, can provide that information.
Yeah, the planning commission decision is final unless appealed to the city council within five business days, ending Tuesday, August 4th at 5:00 PM. Anyone wishing to appeal this decision should contact the city clerk at city.clerk2, the number two, at cityofSanRafel.org or by phone at 485-3066 to make arrangements for filing of an appeal.
Great, thank you. Okay, we are done with that item. So thank you to the applicant and her team. I appreciate it. We'll move on.
Thank you. I'll log off.
All right, next we'll take it back to Rafi for the director's report.
Okay, so thank you. First off, a big welcome to Commissioner Previtali and Commissioner Saudi. This is their first meeting and we had a chance for a brief orientation and we'll follow up with that a little bit more, once they got their feet wet a little bit. As you may have heard, the commission, the council also appointed another new commissioner that will be taking the seat of Commissioner Lockren, as this is her last meeting with the planning commission. So we want to, I, I know staff would really like to thank her for her years of service. It was such a pleasure to watch somebody come in and grow and pretty much immediately get thrown into a, some very big projects and some, and the chair role and really, you know, thrive and blossom and really run efficient meetings. So it was very, very nice to work with you and appreciate all your detailed review and insight and thought that you put into every single decision you made. So that's from all of staff to you and we wish you the best in your new endeavors in Colorado.
Great, thank you, Rafi. I appreciate it. Thank you to all staff as well.
Some other notes to our, so for Commissioner Lockren's position, there's already a commissioner that's been appointed. His name is Elias Hill. He will be starting August. So he'll be present at the first meeting in August. So that brings me to that, which is our next meeting is August 11th. We do have one agenda item. It's an informational item on a couple of different things, topics that the council has been thinking about for a few years, particularly related to how to encourage and promote housing projects and are, are any of our processes, regulations and things that we are doing as a local government getting in the way? And so they've had a bunch of work and study sessions that they've kind of prioritized various topics. And a couple of those will be coming back to them as well. We're also gonna bring it to the commission as an informational item before we bring actual draft ordinances. And that'll be on, one, the inclusionary housing requirements, which is the affordable housing requirements of projects. Two, the state density bonus rules that we have incorporated into our local code. The main, the main thing there is that, as you are familiar, there seems to be very frequent and regular updates of state law that are made that, once we adopt them as into our ordinances, they become outdated with very soon. And so there have been some changes to state density bonus law that we have to update in our local ordinance as well as some other, kind of trying to make it a little bit simpler to understand. It's a very complex topic. So we're proposing some modifications to that. And then also some discussion about the appeals process and for projects and what, what that should be, what the kind of the trigger point should be and those sorts of things. So those are three of the, kind of the topics that the council wanted to have us look at first. And so they'll be getting an informational report as well as the commission and then we'll be preparing the draft ordinances. So that'll be on the 11th. Couple other notes on upcoming agenda items. The big, the big one is the general plan. The general plan, along with the downtown precise plan, have been moving along. Our, the commission's representative is Commissioner Davidson. So she has, she participated in the steering committee process, which ended in June of this year. They met 25 times, I believe it was, reviewing various topics, providing input. And as you can imagine, didn't always agree. But that's what the commission, the committee was made up of. It was to represent a wide-ranging view so we could hear different opinions and kind of test out scenarios and hear the different thoughts on that. So the commission, the subcommittee concluded their work on both the general plan and the downtown precise plan. We are now finalizing the downtown precise plan and general plan, trying to prepare public review drafts. We hope to have those ready in the next one to two months for them to be made public so we can receive some public comment. And then also then, that will come before the commission for an initial review and so forth through the process. The EIR will also be released around the same time that analyzes the environmental impacts of the proposed changes of both plans. One thing we are looking to do is probably the second meeting in August, given that it has been some time since the commission has gotten an update on the general plan and you're gonna be looking at it pretty soon here. And we also, coupled with the fact that we have three new commissioners, we're gonna probably come to you with a preview and kind of a high-level summary of the process we've gone through, what we've looked at and some of the kind of the major changes to help set the framework and also kind of help you understand the organization of the plan so that when you actually get the plan, it'll be a little bit easier to follow rather than dropping a volume like this and saying, here you go. So we hope to do that the second meeting in August as a primer, kind of an introduction and really not trying to get any feedback or thought on it, but just kind of explain to you how we've gotten here and what the work that's gone into it and kind of what the next steps will be. And then probably, like I said, in a couple of months, the public review draft will hit the streets. We'll start getting public comments and have public meetings. And then it'll have meetings before the planning commission and ultimately the city council. So a couple other notes with, you know, COVID. We're now going on month four, starting month five of the new COVID world as all of you are dealing with that in your personal lives. As you can imagine, it's having significant economic impacts on many homeowners, property owners, residents, small businesses, large businesses in our community. It's also having an economic impact on the city and the staff. So the council last month had to adopt a budget that had a $12 million deficit. And so we had to make significant cuts, other changes in various departments, furloughs and so forth to make up that $12 million shortfall that we anticipate. And that could be a changing number depending on how things go. So with that, there have been some pretty drastic changes in community development. And one of these upcoming meetings, once things settle down a little bit, we'll kind of present to you what the department now looks like. So we are gonna be a little leaner, a little meaner, maybe. But we'll, you know, continue to try and provide as best a service as we can within the means that we have. But I'll try to give you an update. Our code enforcement department, through some unfortunate, some early retirements and people leaving, is unfortunately left with just one person right now. So that's probably the division that's the most impacted. And building, it's been going through actually a record-breaking last few months on permit, permits, applications and permit issuances. So the COVID, I think we were talking about it a little bit earlier. I think it's caused a lot of people who are staying home to actually do some of the things that they had talked about doing for many years and just hadn't had time. So our permit numbers are really record-breaking right now. And it's at a time when we have the least amount of inspectors and plan checkers and permit tech. So it's, it's been a little challenging, but everything's being done online. And, you know, we're kind of reinventing processes as we go. So that's that. And then our DRB, some of you may be wondering about our DRB. The DRB is still kind of in this temporary COVID process, which is just, we're using a subcommittee of two DRB members. Commissioner Saudi actually was serving as one of the two subcommittee members until her appointment to the planning commission. So it's, we're doing informal meetings, really. It's really between the staff, the applicant and the DRB, kind of at a professional design level to make sure designs are, meet the guidelines and standards that we have. Does not involve public notice and does not involve a public meeting. And then those recommendations from the DRB are being incorporated in the project and then forwarded to the planning commission, staff or zoning administrator, whichever body is the final decision-making body in that case. So that's still in a kind of a demo mode. That is also one of the things that the council had looked at as part of their package of potential changes is, you know, can we streamline our development review process to not have these multiple steps, but try and make it a simpler process? And this was one of the ideas of some sort of kind of subcommittee action, less of a, you know, less of a formal meeting. And that's what's being tried out right now. And so at some point, we'll be deciding on how we want to proceed more permanently in that particular case. So they meet, they generally meet twice a month as well. And they, we're holding them on Wednesday mornings, following the normal DRB date just to keep some sort of routine schedule that works with our DRB members. And so like I said, it's been working pretty well. They've looked at a variety of projects and provided some input on those projects. And some of those will be coming before you soon. So a couple, one, a couple more items. There have been some changes to, as I noted, because of the budget, to a furlough schedule. So city staff will be furloughed 13 days as part of the budget reductions over the next fiscal year from July to June. That actually is going to affect some meeting dates. So there's a couple of dates that, there's a furlough falling on the Monday, which then pushes the council meeting to a Tuesday. So there's some kind of oddball things that are happening because of the furlough dates that were selected. So we are updating the planning commission calendar and are gonna get that out to you hopefully this week. I think we have almost all of them solved except for one, but we're gonna get that out to you so you have those dates. For the most part, it's still the second and fourth Tuesday. There's just a couple of months where there's some oddball issues with a planning commission date. So that concludes my, sorry, for my long presence. It's been a while since we've talked, my long presentation.
Thank you. Wow, that was a lot of information. Anybody have any questions? Well, thanks Rafi, you and the whole team. These are extremely difficult times, especially when we're all going through so much and then we have good people that are leaving. So I want to say thank you to Commissioner Lockren. Pleasure. It's been awesome to work with you. Do you want to say anything before your final jump off of the PC?
You know what, just, I've really enjoyed serving on the planning commission. I've learned a lot, have a tremendous amount of respect for everybody who serves on it and also for staff, the, the amount of work that they put into each of these project, projects is just amazing. So I, I thank everybody for, for the opportunity to serve with you and work with you.
Ms. Lockren, I wanted to thank you because you, you have a certain way about you, a very calming, especially when people are getting kind of excited. And you did kind of jump in at a very difficult time. And I hope that serves you well in your future, you know, community service in Colorado. But thank you very much for serving. It was a pleasure to serve with you and it was nice to see you at meetings and just knowing you'd be, you know, another calm voice in the room. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Yeah, agreed. Well, safe travels and thank you and best of luck. And then again, want to welcome our new commissioners. I know you both got a chance to speak a lot tonight because it was such a demanding, heavy, complicated, contentious item. But I do want to open it up. Is there anything you guys or the two of you would like to say or provide the commissioners before we close the meeting out?
Just looking forward to working with you all.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. I'll second that as well. I'm excited to be joining and I'm just continuing to serve the city and looking forward to, you know, the service that we can provide. I did have a question too for Rafi. We don't have any big projects coming up, do we? Like, is, is like, yeah, is like Costco coming back? Or, you know, I know the market hall thing, I heard from Steve was kind of rearing its head. And I mean, that was months ago. So it's just, it'd be just good to know if there's anything big coming up this summer.
So one of the things with the, I guess with COVID is that, and even just before COVID, we had a few large projects in the pipeline. They either concluded, you know, they, they were processed or they kind of dropped out. So at this moment, I would say there really aren't, aren't any major projects in the pipeline. What I can say though is in the last couple of months, the level of interest in What I can say though is in the last couple of months, the level of interest in development has increased and so we're getting more inquiries and there's some projects that are going through pre-applications that are kind of close to submitting. So for example, you asked about the, the market place on Fourth Street, the old Macy's building, that's been in a kind of an internal design process and with the, with our economic development department where we're reviewing a lot of back and forth documents because that one's a little complicated because it's involving the city parking lot, but it is active, it's moving forward, it hasn't just reached a stage to come before designer review board and planning commission, but that is moving forward. We've got a Aldersley Retirement Community master plan that is a 10-year plan, it's not a major project in the sense that it's really not adding a lot of new stuff, it's taking down some old buildings, making some new buildings, making them kind of different room configurations, but it'll probably involve, it'll involve the planning commission and may entail an EIR, we don't know yet, but that's looking like it'll be submitted soon. We've got a project, or it's a lot of interest in the West America Bank site that has recently come up on the market on the corner of E and Fourth. West America Bank is selling that property and there's a lot of interest in developing that property. Costco, we don't, we haven't heard a, really a word since the last couple of months after they went through the pre-app process, so they received city feedback. They were discussing internally between them and the mall, but I don't, we don't have any sort of inclination or indication of what, what they plan to do, whether they plan to apply or not at this point. There are some projects that are also in the works that have been approved, like Northgate Three will be doing an exterior renovation, that's, they're just getting their permits now, the hotel is coming out of the ground very soon on the corner of Fifth and B. Second and B residential project is actually vertical now, so there is activity going on and then the retirement, residential care facility at Lincoln and Mission will also be getting their permits soon and Oakmont at Redwood Highway, North Centerfell will be going vertical, they're working underground right now, but they're going to be going vertical soon. So it is a little quiet for big projects, but there's probably a few on the, in the, in the wings here.
And I'd like to add that staff's doing a great job. I submitted for a building permit last week and I got my permit today, so even though you guys are short-staffed, I got one week turnaround.
Good, yeah, we're trying, trying to make, trying to get people, you know, what they're trying to, improvements they're trying to do.
Great. All right, well, thank you again, everybody, thank you again Commissioner Lockren, best of luck and on that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:48.
Thank you.
Thank you Sarah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks everybody.